Okay, the Habit of Grace Planning Commission meeting for October sixteenth, twenty twenty five will now come to order. I'll begin by calling the roll. Ed Gorono.
Here.
Warren Hartenstein.
Here.
For Hot Shaw.
I'm here.
Janice Chan is absent. She announced her absence several weeks ago. Harry Miller.
Here.
Randy Craig.
Here.
And we have a quorum. And we have no alternate, so even though we have a missing member, we'll be operating with the six of us, which we only need four for a quorum, so we're in good shape. I'd like to introduce Councilwoman Vicky Jones, who's present as our council liaison. Our city attorney is not going to be able to be here tonight. And all the way at the far end is Jeff Goins, the director of planning, and Eric Lawrence, the associate city planner. And that's all of Habit of Grace's officialdom tonight. Well, this opens as a general workshop, oh, excuse me, a general meeting before we get into the case application hearings. And before we get into the piece of business that we have to deal with in the general part of the meeting, are there any citizens here that wish to address the planning commission about anything in general, not tonight's business, but anything other than tonight's business? Okay, hearing none. All right. So we go to old business. And that's the review and adoption of our proposed rules and procedures for the planning commission. At our last meeting, we did a final pass through those rules and procedures and got everyone's final comments and any changes that we were making to them at that time. And then I went back and amended the document to reflect all of those. And I sent those, that amended document out to each of you a month ago. And so tonight, unless there is a concern or some sort of correction that's significant, and by the way, as you can read in those rules and procedures, the commission is free to amend them at any time as we move forward. So it's not like this is cast in stone, exactly word for word for the hereafter. So we can always make a change if we find something's not working. So I would like to entertain, well, first of all, are there any further comments on this document? Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the Habit of Grace Planning Commission Rules of Conduct, Operation, and Procedure effective tonight. I hear a motion.
So move.
All right, Mr. Hartenstein moves.
Second.
Second.
Vice Chair seconds. Any discussion on this motion and second? Hearing none, I would like to do a roll call vote. And when we do these roll call votes, which we will be doing at each of these case application hearings, what we need is a verbal aye or nay, and at the same time, just show your hand. And that's for the camera, you know, because sometimes when people are not here, they can't tell who spoke. And so, all right, I'm going to start with Mr. Randy Craig.
Aye.
Right? Mr. Harry Miller.
Aye.
Mrs. Chan is absent. Mrs. for Hot Shaw.
Aye.
Mr. Warren Hartenstein.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ed Gorono.
Aye.
And Chair Volney Ford votes aye. So we're going to adopt these rules, and we're just going to do it right now. We're just going to go ahead and sign these things. That way, we're really official, because we're going to operate under these tonight now that you've approved them. And if you would pass your copy all the way down to the director of planning, because he'll be the repository of one set.
Okay.
And the commission will keep the other set. And if we, and everyone is free to make copies of anything you want to make. Now, as far as the commissioners are concerned, and our council liaison, that's ours, thanks. I'm going to go right back and make hard copies of this signed document and distribute these at our next meeting, so that you'll have a permanent signed set. Okay. So that concludes our general meeting. And at this time, we're going to move to the yeah, we're going to move to the case application hearings. And now each of these is gavelled separately and held as a separate individual meeting for each one of these. I'm explaining everything to everybody, because this is the first night that we've truly operated under these new rules and procedures. So I just want to make sure that we do it right. Okay. And we'll call the first case application hearing to order. Let me find it, what I did with it here. And I'm going to have to call the roll again. Mr. Craig.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mrs. Chan is absent. Mrs. Shaw.
I'm here.
Mr. Hartenstein.
Here.
Mr. Gorono.
Here.
And Chairman Ford is present. And this case application hearing is for October sixteenth, twenty twenty five. It is building permit number two oh two five dash zero zero five eight. The applicant is the Habit of Grace Decoy Museum team. And this is for extension number one of their site plan approval that occurred about a year ago. So they have to, it's been a year, and they haven't started the project. And I think the reasons were given in the report or in the request. Now, speaking procedures, all participants must be recognized by the chair to speak. And that's everybody, including us. And requests by hand signal is okay, unless I've invited somebody to speak by name. In other words, just if you need, want to speak, just give an indication. Cross speaking or cross questioning can only be allowed when permitted by the chair. That means if we're right in the middle of it, and let's say the director of the planning department is speaking, and a citizen wants to ask him a question, that's called cross questioning. That's, in other words, all questions and all, everything has to kind of come here and then go to the other person if we're trying to get information from a different person in order to answer a question. The public that might be present and the applicant's party who is present must provide their name and address before speaking, just one time. But that's, we need to get your name and address on the record. I will announce the time when there's a special opportunity for the public to speak to this case. Whenever we have a case application hearing, the public is always invited to speak to the case. The public does not have to be sworn in to speak. Because they're not testifying, they're just given opinion. The speaking time for each citizen that wants to speak will be limited to three minutes. At this time, I'd like to call upon the director of planning to give just a very brief summary of the case and to introduce to us the applicant's representative. So, Mr. Goins, or who wants to do it?
Mr. Lawrence will.
All right.
Oh, Chairman Ford, yes, Eric Lawrence, seven eleven Pennington Avenue, City Hall. The applicant you have before you, case one, is two one five Giles Street, the Habit of Grace Decoy Museum. The applicant is Mr. Michael Tarquini, sitting in the front row. He is a board member of the Habit of Grace Decoy Museum. The brief applicant's request is to hear a request by the applicant for a one-year extension per one fifty five dash twenty five of the city code for the previous October seventeenth, twenty twenty four site plan approval for a thirty thousand, six hundred and eighteen square foot addition to the existing decoy museum. This is their first extension request of two permitted per city code. If you have any questions, I'm available. Thank you.
Okay. And who are you introducing to present for them? Or is someone here?
Yeah, Mr. Michael Tarquini in the front row.
Okay. Now, before you present, sir, I would like to administer the oath to everybody that's testifying. And that would be if the city staff is testifying or if anybody with the museum, such as yourself, is testifying. If you would just raise your right hand. Okay, that's right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response given and statements made by you will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. All right, sir, and I'll invite the applicant to present the case.
Okay, and for brevity, I will, a year ago tomorrow, we were granted an approval for the case number that Mr. Lawrence suggested. I did not memorize that number. And we have made significant progress, although we have not made the progress that we had hoped for, and therefore, we have not applied for permit, nor have we started any part of the project other than the planning. Currently, my other guest here is Mr. Paul Thompson, who's our architect. And we are in the throes of preparing permitting documents. We've made significant progress, and there are countless numbers of them to review. And we are also in the fundraising stage, which is always a fun stage. And so we have been successful up till now. We've probably raised near five hundred thousand dollars, I would say, although it's a drop in the bucket compared to what the complete project will be. But as with every project, you've got to start to finish. So we're on our way, and we do have plans to, we've approached some foundations, and we've approached other funding agencies. Most recently, got a second endorsement from the Maryland Historical Trust for the project. And they awarded us another hundred thousand dollars, which they had awarded a hundred thousand dollars previously prior to the first time we came. So we're making our way. We're like every other nonprofit. We fits and starts, and people come and people go. And sometimes we find ourselves retraining our committee because we get new members. So fortunately, I've been able to hang in, and I'm still the guy that's anchoring the whole thing. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions? Okay. I've got too many papers here. I just have one. And this refers to the staff report, and anybody can answer this. But it says here that the board president and their architectural committee consultant, ADW team, on behalf of the museum, are coordinating with board members to fundraise for the project while still clarifying details of the overall project scope. And when you talk about an overall project scope, that's pretty all encompassing. Can you just give us some kind of hint of what kind of details you're talking about? And will it substantially affect the exterior?
There are no, Paul, chime in if I'm correct.
He may come up and testify.
There are no external.
Okay, so it's all internal stuff?
This is all inside the house. Does that room? Does that room really need to be this or can it be that?
Got it.
You know, that kind of stuff.
Well, that's just the thing.
We're trying to turn this into a, to, to basically transition the museum into an inner, more interactive space.
Sure.
To, I mean, our, all of our missions as nonprofits should be to entertain the younger generations. And reading storyboards probably isn't going to get that done. So we have to, we're not trying to make the place Times Square, but we need to be between where we are and Times Square to entertain the younger generation.
Right, right.
We're, we're still bantering about, bantering about how to, to accomplish that.
Well, those internal changes are really not going to
No.
have any effect on the commission's decision. So that's, that's what I was just checking on to make sure that we're not stirring up the exterior.
And we realize that there's a magic number on the exterior that you want to stay within, and so we were well aware of that.
Got it. Paul, did you want to add anything to that?
Paul Thompson, I'm the president of Architectural Design Works, 22 West Allegheny Avenue, Towson, Maryland, 21204. So with, with that said, we, we pulled up and spent a great deal of time with a museum expert to, to really look at the interiors of the museum and to see if it could possibly affect our footprint. It, it did not. We're confident the footprint will remain the same and the exterior renderings that we submitted during our last planning commission will remain intact. We have no changes there. What ultimately will occur is as we get our fundraising and our budget set, that may affect some of the things we can do in phase one interior wise and/or might have to push to phase two. So it, it's going to be a process of evaluation.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do. Can you give us some kind of a timeline or a, a budget or something to give us an idea of that, that you have a plan to get there in this next year? Is that, um, something you think is going to happen or do you feel like?
Well, you've got, you've got two years from tonight, right? Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
If, if I can jump in, so, so to give you some comfort, um, architecturally, I'd say we're in the neighborhood of 75% construction document completion. We've ramped up our MEP engineer and our structural engineers at this point. We've held them back a little bit in that we want to see where that fundraising goes. We have a big fundraiser in December. Our hope is after the first of the year, we cut everyone loose, we finish the design of the shell and then we know what we have to work with on the interiors.
Okay.
So we're, we're hopeful that we could be in for at least a shell building permit, um, say the mid part of next year.
Good.
Is our hope.
Okay.
You're not going to mess with Madison Mitchell, are you?
No, sir.
Okay.
We're going to take good care of him.
He, he, he gets kind of angry when he, when you mess with him. Any other questions?
Good.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now, does the public, anybody here from the public have any question about this case regarding this case? Hearing none. Okay, I'd like to hear a motion, uh, from the commission to close the record or to table. No, 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 table means that we're not going to approve it tonight. We're going to, we're going to have to wait until next, next month to even consider, to keep considering this thing. Yeah. So what, are you going to move?
Move to.
Oh.
I would be glad to move to approve, um, the extension.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
I'm sorry?
Second?
Mm-hmm.
So not to get crazy here, but you asked for a motion to close the record, but we got a motion to approve the extension.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was sitting here focusing on this.
So I just, and I apologize, I just. All right, so I, I meant to move that we close the record on the, um,
Okay.
Second. On the testimony.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and I second that. Okay.
And who seconded?
Me.
Oh, you seconded?
Sure.
Is any more deliberation on this case? Any commissioners, anybody want to say anymore?
I did have one thing I wanted to say. This is, it's a one-year extension. You said he had two years from today. I was confused about that too.
Okay, if, if, if we extend for one year on the first extension, that takes us to a year from now. And they can come back one more time and that takes them, takes us to two years from now. In other words, you can extend twice.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So you, you get a three-year shot.
No, I got you now, it's just the way it came out.
I'm sorry, I.
It's okay. And I guess I just was trying to clarify that everybody's aware of the, this timeline and that, yes, this is the first extension and there can be a second one, but not after that.
That's right.
Okay.
Then you just start over and bring a case again. Okay. No deliberation. All right. I, I forgot to call the roll on that motion to close. I'm getting used to this whole process here again myself. Let's vote on the motion to close the record. Mr. Garono?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Hartenstein?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Now, I hear a motion that we approve this request to extend site plan approval for one year.
Can I have a go at that again?
Okay.
Yeah, I moved to, um, grant, uh, approve the extension of the site plan.
Second?
I second that.
Any discussion on that motion? I'll, um, I'm going to call the roll. This time I'll start with Mr. Miller.
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Hartenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Aye.
Mr. Garono?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. You have your site plan extension. Sorry about all this procedure, but we, and good luck. This should be a good year for that, right? To get it all together, you hope?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Some of these guys were Tom Mudd giving you four or $5,000 to them. I just heard them, they were whispering. All right. Huh? Okay. Thank you very much. The hearing is closed and we'll now move to the next case application hearing. It is October 16th, 2025. And, um, I'm going to call the roll, planning commission. Mrs. Shaw?
I'm here.
Mrs. Chan is absent. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mr. Hartenstein?
Here.
Mr. Garono?
Here.
And Chair Ford is here. And we have a quorum for this hearing. This would be, uh, case number 2023-0010. The applicant is listed on here as the Popeyes team. Uh, this is, um, for approval of extension number two of the site plan, which we approved, I guess, two years ago for this thing. And this is the, as you've heard earlier, this is the last extension that the commission can grant. After that, if, if the project doesn't get underway, then it has to come back as a fresh start, come back through again. I'm not going to go through the speaking procedures again because we, we heard that earlier, but it's in the same room here. So at this time, I would like to call upon the director of planning or his representative to give a brief summary of this case and to introduce the applicant's representative.
Hello Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Commission? This is for the case 1101 Pulaski Highway Popeyes Restaurant. The applicant is Ms. Eliza Hertzmark with Bowler Engineering. The applicant requests a second and final one-year extension per the 155-25 of the city code for the original November 14th, 2022 site plan approval for a 2,529 square foot Popeyes Restaurant. A one-year site plan extension was previously granted on November 21st, 2024 by the planning commission. This is their second and final extension per city code. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions of the administration? Of the department, I mean. Okay. I'll call on, uh, the applicant's representative to come up. And before you start, if we're going to have to do another oath. So everybody that wants to testify, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the response is given and statements made by you will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, firm.
Okay, thank you. And if you would begin by giving your name and address, please.
Sure, my name is Eliza Hertzmark. Um, I'm a professional engineer with Bowler. Address is 901 Delaney Valley Road, Suite 801, Towson, Maryland, 21204.
Okay, and you may begin.
Great, um, well, thank you for having me again. So just quick, uh, review of the history. We received site plan approval for this project November 7th, 2022. Um, we were here last year for the first extension, um, which was approved on November 11th of 2024. Expires November 7th, the November 7th date of the original approval. And we are here now applying for the second site plan approval extension. So, a little bit of background about what the, the delay on this project has been. At our initial site plan submittal and stormwater submittal, which were reviewed by the state highway administration because the project is both right on the state highway as well as our stormwater outfall, we do discharge water back to the public right of way. And the state highway administration, um, had comments that they were requesting full curbed acceleration and deceleration lanes from the access to the site with bicycle compatibility. So that's a 17-foot module. And, uh, the client obviously had already hired a traffic consultant. Um, and the traffic consultant went back and forth with SHA a number of times to try to reduce their request. Tried to ask for if we could, uh, just stripe the lanes instead of bringing them into, um, full, I'm trying to get the words right, um, to bring them into full traffic bearing capacity, um, which is one of SHA requirements. And unfortunately, that was, that request was turned down. And SHA is maintaining that they're requiring, requiring full traffic bearing capacity for the acceleration and deceleration lanes. So the, the owner is now working to get cost estimates. The full process for the SHA plans from a design perspective involve coring the existing road to see what's there. Involve full desire plans for the, I think it's about 400 linear feet of improvements as well as sections along that. So the design costs are much more than the developer originally had allotted. Um, and then on top of that, the construction costs. So when I spoke to the developer about, you know, should we go for the second extension? You know, what, what's your, what's Popeyes thinking? Are they still trying to do this? He said, yes, we still want to make this work. You know, we know we'll have another year to try to get these costs in line, get the, you know, get the right funding allocated and we want to push forward and try this. So I'm here representing the developer who understands that this is, you know, the final one-year extension, understands that not a lot of progress has been made, but, you know, understands that he sort of has the final answer at this point from state highway. And he, you know, does want to move forward and put in the effort to try to make it work over the next year.
Thank you. For entertaining questions from fellow commissioners, I just have a couple. Uh, number one, you mentioned the term developer. Is the developer different than the Popeyes ownership?
You can intersperse those words. The developer is Popeyes.
Is Popeyes.
Lawrence Man Bassett, who is, uh, the applicant who was on the original plans, who couldn't be here right now, but yeah, same, same person who has stuck with the project from the Popeyes side from the beginning.
The next question I have is, um, since you've still got a lot of work to do to satisfy the SHA, I assume that's the only entity that you need to satisfy at this stage of your site plan. Is that correct?
Correct, the site plan is, has not changed in the three years since we got the approval.
Well, that's what I was going to ask you next is, is, does any of this materially affect the appearance of, of the site itself?
No, nothing has changed for the site itself.
Is there anything about this, um, negotiation that would, um, negatively impact traffic along Lewis Lane, which is the city's street?
Not that I am aware of.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'll, um, it's a good thing because I, if, if so, then I would have said, you know, maybe when you get the entire new site plan nailed down with the highway department, then perhaps you should bring it back to us to, for us to have another look at it. But based on what you're saying, I personally don't believe that's necessary, but.
And just to be clear, we still have to complete the final stormwater management process with the city of Havertagh Grace. So we're not fully.
Yeah, well, the department takes care of that, yeah. Fellow commissioners, questions?
I, I take it the code, our code hasn't changed since this started either. Is that correct?
There's been no substantial changes that would adversely impact the application.
Okay.
That's a good question. Anybody else?
So it's another year's extension you're requesting, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Do you think that's sufficient time?
Based on what we are capable of doing in my office, we can get the plans from where they are now to approval in one year as long as, you know, we have the, the go-ahead from Popeyes.
What, what exactly, this is a question to the administration. What exactly determines the deadline? What, what, what one action has to occur to meet the deadline?
Uh, per the code, it's substantial construction, which essentially means the foundation has to be constructed.
You actually have to have, have to have a foundation in by that deadline or you?
Correct.
Not just to start, not just to start?
Correct.
Okay, I learned something.
Yeah, I, I will say, I was personally thinking that it was permit in hand, that that's what we were working towards because we had applied for the permit, but obviously don't have it issued. So thank you for clarifying that.
Well, they put a hole in the ground and there's a nice fence around the hole. Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Thank you so much. Any citizen here have a question? No? Anybody else? Okay. Calling for a motion to, uh, close the record. Or to.
I moved, I moved to close the record.
Second.
Okay, let me just jot that down. And you seconded? I'll call the roll. Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Garono?
Aye.
Mr. Hartenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, the record is closed. And now we move to the, uh, vote on the, grant the approval, site plan approval, extension number two.
Would you like to introduce a motion?
You can start with a motion if you want to.
So I, I'd like to introduce the motion to approve the extension.
All right. Have to write all this down real quick. Second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
No discussion on that motion, okay. And I'll call the roll. Mr. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Carono?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
And Mr. Hartenstein?
Aye.
You have your site plan extension approval for number two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we hope we don't see you next year. We hope you're, because we're waiting to eat a Popeyes.
I'll have my permit in hand and start.
There you go. And now we move to our third and final case, application hearing tonight. Havertie Grace Planning Commission meeting for October 16, 2025. I'll call the roll again. Mr. Carono?
Present, here.
Ms. Shaw?
I'm here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Hartenstein?
Still here.
And Mr. Craig?
Here.
And Chair Ford is present. This is permit number 20260069. The applicant is Lisa Scott Coleman. This is a site plan approval for the conversion of a residential to a non-residential office building, and to put a 300-square-foot addition on that residence. So really, it's kind of two things wrapped into one. Again, I will not announce all the speaking procedures, we've already done that. I call again upon the Director or the representative of the Planning Department to give a brief summary of this case.
Thank you. Hello, Commissioner Ford, Chairman Ford and Commission, Eric Lawrence, Department of Planning, 711 Pennington Avenue, City Hall. Ms. Lisa Scott is the applicant seated in the gallery. The location is 552 Lewis Street. As you briefly stated, this is applicant for one item being the site plan review and approval for per 155-6A3 for the conversion of an existing building in whole and part from residential use to non-residential use in the RO zoning district. And two, the review and approval for a plus or minus 300 square foot or 18% addition to the rear of that said proposed 1,655 square foot office building conversion per 155-6D of the City Code. That being said, I'm going to give you a brief synopsis of the staff report, which is available online on the city website under the calendar, under today's date, in a PDF format for those who are listening or following online for them to view.
Thank you, sir.
The lot was recently consolidated. It is a total of 12,000 square feet, which consists of a structure one, which would be 1,655 square feet for a vacant residential dwelling, and structure two, which would be a 1,280 square foot non-conforming existing funeral establishment within a attached parking garage along South Freedom Lane. There are no streams or tidal wetlands, or any forest, or any areas of concern environmentally. As previously stated, it was recently recorded and consolidated on June 10, 2024. Went to the Board of Appeals on August 3, 2023, to allow off-site required parking through a April 4 of 2022 shared parking agreement with the Havertie Grace Color School Museum and Cultural Center, which is adjacent, and then the also 555 Alliance Street parking. Oh, no, that was at the 555 is the Havertie Grace Color School. The second one is the April 5, 2023 shared parking agreement with the Matt Zion Baptist Church, which is across from the Lisa Scott Funeral Home. The applicant is requesting the two site plan approval and extension approval. The zoning is stated, it's RO. The APF is already satisfied, the DPW submitted their letters. There's no forest conservation, there's no stormwater management, there's no sustainable landscaping plans to be reviewed and approved. Impacts of adjacent properties are within RO zoning district, as stated, the site access, parking, and circulation, they're, they're satisfying the off-street parking requirement through two shared-use parking agreements. The floor plan architectural sections elevations have been submitted in the staff report for your review, the building facade and basing, the architectural layout and elevations have been provided to the Historic Preservation Commission, which was reviewed at their October 14, 2025 meeting. Comments will be provided and forwarded to the applicant when received. No additional signs are being proposed, signage is existing, grading erosion and stormwater management is not a concern, water and sewage, DPW released a letter on September, dated September 17, 2025, addressing those items. Floodplain critical areas not a concern, comprehensive plan is consistent. Comes to the Department of Planning's recommendation, which is the Department of Planning is examining appropriateness and completion of the application, and per 155-11 of the City Code recommends approval of the site plan for the conversion of the existing residential building into an office, and approval of the addition to the rear of the building. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from commissioners of the department? Yes.
I have one question, and I was just confused about something here. And maybe I'm just not looking at it the right way. Two addresses?
The applicant has one address, I believe it is 552 Lewis Street.
Right, the house is oriented on Freedom Lane, it says, so where does the fire truck go?
What do you mean?
If there's an emergency, you know what I mean? It's, it's kind of confusing. If the business address looks like it should be on the, the street that the front is oriented on, and the actual address of the property is Lewis Street, I just see that maybe there's some potential confusion for emergency responders or something else, you know what I'm saying? So I just was asking for a clarification on that, please.
I do believe that the 552 address was the existing address of the funeral establishment. There, the other three lots would have been, what, 552, 554, and then 556. The house that's being converted would have been on Lot 554, and then the adjacent vacant lot next to that would have been 556. So we consolidated it, and there maintained the existing address of the existing funeral establishment.
Okay. I don't want to get too deep into, into that stuff until we get sworn in, but, but I think we understand what, what the situation is.
Sorry if I was premature with that, I apologize.
All righty. Everyone who wishes to testify, please raise your right hand. Come on up if you'd like, because you'll be next. Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that the responses given and statements made by you will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Since we posed that question a moment ago, if you could just clarify, did you, have you always owned the funeral establishment and the house, or did you buy the house?
I brought the house. I've owned the funeral home the longest. I brought the house about eight years ago, and it's been sitting vacant, has been vacant for quite a while.
So you, you've owned the whole shebang for a number of years?
Yes.
And, and the house, of course, was facing Lewis Street?
Yes, and so is the funeral home. The front door for the funeral home is facing Lewis Street as well.
Really?
Yes.
So it's sitting way back?
Just sits back, yes.
Okay, so that kind of answers that, and thank you. Now, if you'd like to give us your name officially for the record and your address.
Sure, my name is Lisa Scott Coleman, address is 552 Lewis Street, Havertie Grace, Maryland, 21078.
Thank you, and you're on, you may begin.
Well, I think Erica gave you a pretty good summary. We're trying to expand the funeral home somewhat by moving the office where we meet and make arrangements with families into the home to then open up the funeral home for viewings and services a little bit more, and I just felt by, after going through the Boards of Appeals and converting the home into an office sits more with the zoning for the area, R and O, than trying to grandfather, with the funeral homes grandfathered in, and being in that neighborhood, so it was more of a hurdle to try to do anything else with the home as part of the business than to make it into a business center. And needing to add on the addition, the small addition in the back, just to accommodate a room to able to move my showroom where we display the caskets and all for families to view, is a quick summary.
Good. Now, the one question that, that, does that conclude?
Yes.
Okay. The one question I have is, is your off-street parking requirement where you had to go to the Color School Museum, does that relationship there entirely satisfy that, that seven parking space requirement? And you're just getting the Mount Zion parking as a, as a freebie, as an addition? Is that the way it works?
As a bonus, yes.
Correct. Yes, that was addressed at a previous Board of Appeals hearing.
Okay, so really, the only, the only legal document, if you will, even though it's, I guess it's just by a letter-type agreement, pertains to the Color School, it really doesn't, Mount Zion is really not required?
Yeah, the Mount Zion was there for overflow parking.
Good.
The, the Color School was there to satisfy the additional off-street parking that's required per City Code for the office conversion. Now, the funeral establishment, since it's existing and grandfathered in, were not required to provide any additional parking or meet any standards per current City Code. It's because it's grandfathered in, it's therefore exempt, but the overflow with the Mount Zion was there in case there is needed.
How long has that funeral establishment operated?
It was built back in the 1940s.
Yeah, that was way before we had zoning or anything else, really. This Havertie Grace was the wild, wild west back in those days. And, okay, commissioners, do you have questions? Yes?
All right, I still have the question, because, and maybe, maybe you need to just explain it to me slower, but it says the office building will be oriented towards South Freedom Lane. So it, but it doesn't have a South Freedom Lane address. So it just seems confusing to me, and maybe I'm overthinking it, like, where do you go? If you're going to the office, are you going to Lewis Street, or are you going to South Freedom Lane? If an emergency responder's called for something, are they going to Lewis Street, or are they going to South Freedom Lane? And because the entrance, it says the entrance is on South Freedom Lane. So that was what my question was originally. It might not be a big deal, maybe I'm just confused.
So in reviewing the architectural plans that Ms. Lisa Scott provided, we noticed that the front door of the existing residential dwelling that's being converted into the office is being relocated to the side, which usually the front door faces the street. But since the building is existing, and it already has the front door facing Lewis Street, it's already facing Lewis Street. The relocation of the door is a minor technicality that was being reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission. We're still waiting on those comments from them.
Would you think that would really boil down to just an administrative call?
Sure. I'm, I'm not trying to make an issue that isn't there, it's just I was confused by the report, that's all.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think the sidewalk comes in from Lewis Street, is that correct?
Correct.
To the side, well, what's going to be the side entrance, or the entrance that faces Freedom Lane, so?
And what I was trying to do was to keep everything combined, since it is a residential neighborhood, not interfering with the neighbors too much. Already, the entranceway to the funeral home is up the sidewalk off of Lewis Street. So the entryway would be coming up the sidewalk towards the funeral home, and then you go to the right to go to the business center. You would keep straight to go to the chapel. And I was trying to just keep the entryway, to keep everything combined, and not interfere with the neighbors of having one sidewalk leading to either business. So that's why, right now, the plans are for the door actually looks like it's facing, which it will be facing, Freedom Lane, but the actual physical address is 552, which you're entering off of Lewis Street.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments, or? Glad to see that you're able to expand and improve.
Trying to.
And the addition on the back of the house is that one-story section?
Yes.
That you see in the side elevation?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's, was very tastefully designed to blend in with everything. I agree.
Chairman, I might add as a, as a side comment that as past Chairman of Economic Development, I've served with Ms. Coleman for several years, and found her to be a very dedicated and committed member of the Havertie Grace community and the business community at the same time, so.
That's good. That's good. Okay, no other comments? I hear a motion that we close the record.
So move. Here, next.
Second? Call the roll. Let's start with Mr. Craig.
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Hartenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Carono?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And I assume there are no, are there any citizens here who wish to speak to this? I guess it's too late, though, we closed the record. I just saw somebody walk in. Okay, if not any other comments, I'll entertain a motion that we act on this request for conversion of the residence to a non-residential office and to put the 300-square-foot addition on as described. I hear a motion.
So move.
I'll second.
Any discussion on the motion? Again, I'll call the roll. Mr. Carono?
Aye.
Mr. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Hartenstein?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Your site plan is approved, and good luck. Thank you. And that concludes the third hearing. If, if there's no other business, do I hear a motion that we adjourn? All right, move, second. We're adjourned. Thank you so much. We did this entire meeting in 56 hours.